I'll open it up at 6:30. Bill used to say if we were recording or not. Are we recording, do you know?
Yes.
Okay, are we recording now? Okay. Who's our new tech person? Thomas. So will Thomas? Okay. Will he introduce himself?
What are you there?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. I started recording at 6:29.
Okay, uh, thank you for letting me know that. Okay, will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our meeting was called to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call, Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Saxon. Commissioner, Matthew, how do you say your name?
DeVoy.
DeVoy. Commissioner DeVoy.
Present.
Commissioner Fournette.
Here.
Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Fatisi. Present. Commissioner Huggins.
Present.
Everyone's here. Has anyone had the, has everyone had the opportunity to review the consent agenda from minutes from December 19th, 2023? So we'll start down in the corner, Matthew, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Oh, do you add?
Mm-hmm.
Do you?
Well, you know, you weren't here, so that that's not fair, and neither was Cassandra. How about you, Joseph?
I didn't see any issues.
Silas?
Uh, no, sir.
Danielle?
I had one, if I can find it. It wasn't super critical.
Where was it? Because I took a good look at the, uh, was it a typo or?
Yeah, and honestly, I don't really know that it's... I should have marked it down where it was.
Was it a typo or something of a subject matter basis?
Let's see here if I can just find it real quick.
Because those are easy amendments to make.
Yeah, I'm not going to worry about it.
Okay. Commissioner Huggins.
Um, no, none from this end, yeah.
Okay, great. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fournette. Do we have any further discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed. Motion carries. No amendments.
Is it hands now, or is it eyes and gaze?
I'm just trying to be a little bit more formal. A lot of times we're just looking around, so. So at 6:33, I would like to open up the general public comments section. And please keep comments to three minutes or less because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email at mcmgawen@cedrowwoolly.gov. Attention, public comment. So at this point, I will open the open public comments section at 6:33. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address or any group or organization you represent. Do we have any emails?
No, we do not.
Do we have any audience members wishing to make public comment?
I would wait until your hearing. Wait, wait until your hearing.
Oh, yeah, this is open comments. Do we have any online audience members? I take that as a no. So at this time, I will close the open public comments section at 6:34 PM. Onto our next item, which is the fun one, elections. Election of Planning Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. So I'm going to read from our rules of procedure, and before I do that, I would like to thank everyone for the, uh, for the time that I've served. And I will still be a planning commissioner, but in 2024, I just have too many travel plans, work, and a whole bunch of things where half of my, uh, half of my participation will most likely be online. I feel it's very important that whoever serves in this capacity is in attendance as best they can. So at this time, I will take a look at our rules of procedure. And election, and this is, I think it's a, uh, an error in here, but I'll go through it anyway. Election of officers. Officers shall be rotated and appointed each year at the commission's last regular meeting of the year and shall be done by nomination and voting. However, we go to the first item, number one, that says, "A chairperson and vice chairperson shall be elected by a majority of the commissioners at the first regular meeting of the year. A quorum must be present to elect the chairperson and vice chairperson." We have everybody here, which is fantastic. "If the term of the chairperson ends prior to the election of chair and vice chairperson, the commission shall elect an interim chair until regularly scheduled election." Number three, "In the absence of the chairperson and the vice chairperson, a chairperson pro tem shall be elected informally by the members present to conduct the meeting." Number four, "In the event of the resignation of the chairperson or vice chairperson, the commission shall expeditiously elect a new officer to fill the vacancy for the unexpired term." And finally, number five, "The planning commission by majority vote of those present may create special committees and assign one or more members to such committees." So at this time, okay, and this is what we've done in the past. Does any, would anyone like to nominate anyone for a chairperson position?
I was going to nominate you until you said all that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. So I will return the favor. I will, I nominate Commissioner Fournette. Anyone else?
I, I, yeah, I also recommend Commissioner Fournette for this.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Do I have Danielle? Okay, at this point, all in favor of Commissioner Fournette?
Are you willing to accept that nomination?
I'm willing to accept the idea, so.
I reckon my brain through my schedule, and I think I will be around.
Okay?
Yeah, so.
All in favor, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion. I was, I was being bad.
I just, uh, I don't think it's a motion. I think it's more like all in favor of Commissioner Fournette for chairperson for 2024. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, no one opposed. Joseph, congratulations.
Thank you.
And you will be in this chair, the power chair.
Alright.
For our next meeting. So at this time, I would like to request a nomination for vice chairperson.
Do you feel like your schedule would allow you to be vice chair?
You know, it could, yeah. I just don't want to commit to, uh, the full chalupa, so to speak. And I'm pretty flexible on, uh, on my schedule. But I just know my daughter just decided to move to Spain.
No.
Okay, so, uh, as an au pair, so I know I have some travel coming up there, and I had some stuff that purchased some property down in Tennessee. So I always try and make meetings, and even if it's by Zoom, but, uh, yeah, if that would be people's preferences, I would, I would definitely take a vice chairperson's position.
Anyone else interested in vice chair?
Danielle?
Are you interested in what?
No, I think Joe would make a good vice chair.
So now I got to say all in favor of me?
So, yeah, I'll nominate you, Joe, for vice chair. If, I'll make a motion, I guess.
Okay. Any second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So I will now be the vice chair in 2024. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, just, just a comment. When I was first appointed, it was 2020, it was the year of COVID. And I got to tell you, there was, there was no playbook whatsoever for that environment. And when a lot of us here have been, we were there during that time. It was, it was, it was tough sometimes. I mean, you're, you're trying to run a meeting from your living room, right? Who's online? It's, it's so much easier when I'm looking at people, right? You can see body language and what people are thinking. It feels like it was just yesterday sometimes. I hear you, yeah. Okay, so moving on on our agenda, and thank you, everybody. So public hearing number one, proposed amendments to, oh, I'm sorry, just let me read it first. Proposed amendments to Chapter 1604 SWMC to add definition for shadow plat and allow shadow plating as a method of satisfying the minimum density requirement of four dwelling units per acre. So, prior to opening our public meeting, "If you would like to speak, please state your name and address or any group or organization you represent." We'll open up public hearing number one at 6:41 PM. First, do we have any emails or mail to be read into the record?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have any audience members wishing to speak?
Do we get a, do we get an introduction by staff before that?
I have that on the, on the, on the second end of it.
Good evening. I'm Paul Heeb. I live at 8643 Westerman Road, which is.
Sorry to interrupt. Nicole, can you turn on that mic?
I'll start all over then. Name is Paul Heeb. I live at 8643 Westerman Road, which is just outside the city limits to the west, or northwest. And, uh, I have a piece, one piece of ground that is in the city. It's a five-acre piece that I would like to sell the house off of without subdividing the property and just keep the land in farmland. I have about 90 acres out there, and it's all in farmland. This, this spring, it'll be in potatoes and, uh, several other crops over the years. So I have a, I have a renter that's been in there for 12 years. Nice young couple, and they would like to buy the house and, uh, with a lot. We've tried several different methods to cut this piece off and whatnot. We, a boundary line adjustment wouldn't work because the property adjacent of mine is in the county, and this is in the city. So we're, just want to take a lot off, sell the house to them, and, and leave the rest in farmland. Any questions? Joe?
Hi, Paul. So you were here for the shh, shadow plating? I always forget that term. You were here for the shadow plating meetings. Was that of interest to you, or that, that wouldn't work?
Well, we've.
So to answer the question, so what Paul is trying to do, shadow plating would work to be able for him, to able him to section off that one lot, keep the rest as farmland, as long as he can show that property at the rear, that farmland can eventually be developed, according to the code.
Okay, so the direction we're heading is going to help Paul's situation.
He's, he's in support.
That's all.
No questions, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Do we have any other audience members wishing to speak? So at this time, I would close public hearing number one at 6:44 PM. And PC discussion number one, the opportunity, has everyone had the opportunity to review the agenda item G1 in the meeting, uh, package attachment? And that would be, excuse me, did I already put it up here? The proposed amendments to Chapter 16.04 SWMC to add a definition for shadow plat and to allow shadow plating as a method of satisfying the minimum density requirement of four dwelling units per acre. And at this point, Nicole, would you like to elaborate a little bit more?
Sure. So we've had two meetings so far to discuss shadow plating. So for a quick recap, um, the draft amendments to the subdivision code will allow development under the four units per acre density requirement. Now, that is a GMA, Growth Management Act, um, requirement intended for cities to plan to reduce, um, urban sprawl. So as we discussed previously, it's more of a framework. The GMA cannot make you put that into code, per se. So ultimately, it's up to cities to find a way to, um, reduce urban sprawl. The four units per acre is the framework, the best practices to get there. So cities will often adopt that as part of their code. So it's not, it's not that we can get rid of the four units per acre density, but there are ways that cities have, um, found, found ways to eventually satisfy that. So shadow plating is an option. Mount Vernon has done it, and the code regulations that I've put together here are modeled off of those. So what it is, is the applicant can show on paper through a shadow plat that would be submitted along with their subdivision application that shows that their development would not preclude any future development that would allow for the eventual satisfaction of that four units per acre density requirement. They have to show that there's still ample space for the additional lots necessary to meet that, the adequate access, the infrastructure necessary, um, for that future development according to the current city regulations. So last time, the planning commission voiced the support for shadow plating at the December meeting and was tasked with preparing for a public hearing. So here we are. Planning commission did not have any requests for changes to the draft regulations as they were presented. So they're the same, as you saw them previously. Um, I'm asking planning commission to recommend that city council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 16.04.
Thank you. Starting from right to left, uh, Pat, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm good with, with what we've talked about, the last two meetings.
Danielle?
Nope, nothing to add.
Silas?
No.
Joseph? Like, you guys weren't even here.
Yeah, I did have the opportunity to go online and read the agenda and attachments for the last couple of months' meetings. And so I appreciate all the work that was done, and prior to me being here. And I have, I have no additional comments or concern.
This was a pretty unique solution to something. So let me ask you this. So when they, once someone comes in, regardless of who that applicant is, what actual documentation do they need? I mean, do they need a site plan, any engineering as far as critical areas studies? You know, the, the whole chalupa, because there's a lot going on there. It isn't just the boundaries. It's, it's more like setbacks of things, I mean.
Yeah, so at the stage of subdivision, um, through preliminary plat application, so we'll want wetland studies done, we'll want to make sure that there aren't any critical areas. If there are, they're delineated.
Right.
Mitigated as necessary. As for infrastructure, some of the more minute details, like where exactly are we putting, um, our utility lines? Those can kind of be deferred to final plat. So at preliminary plat stage, they'll just kind of put easement areas in, show, this is kind of where I'm thinking utilities will go. The streets, if there's any private streets or city streets that need to go in, they'll show that on there. They show their lots at the minimum lot size and, um, show that there is the ability to have 15% landscaping. They don't need a full-on landscape plan at that point. So all the puzzle pieces are there at preliminary plat approval. We can put conditions in, um, depending on, you know, the unknowns, right? So utilities, for example.
We had this discussion this afternoon. So as far as utilities go, do you have to show that the actual utility is in place? In essence, is the sanitation line within X feet or whatever? Or let's say, depending on the size of the plat or the shadow plat, water's a big deal, right? So if all of a sudden you can put 16 houses in, that's a totally different type of a water line than if you were just looking at a, a couple of them. So are we talking at that level?
So what we would do, I'm thinking out loud, but at the pre-app stage, you are required to have a pre-application meeting for subdivisions. So what we would do is, here's what you need for your development as proposed right now.
Right.
If you're planning on in the future doing this per your shadow plat, then you'll need to upgrade to this, or what you have here works for your future development. So we'll let them know what they need to do in the future. Or if it doesn't work, then we don't allow it.
It'll vary, without a doubt, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
So essentially, it would be, um, kind of on a case-by-case basis, and we wouldn't need to get that specific here. This, this is sufficient for just having that be an option in the code, and then everything can come later from that. And, and are you envisioning that the shadow plat, of course, this is going to vary based on the, the application and the specifics, but that it can be fairly, fairly broad? And like, you, just, these requirements just basically say you got to show where you locate right away to, they don't really have to show, like Commissioner Fatisi was saying, you know, that the utilities can support a project they're not actually doing right now. That wouldn't really be necessary until time of preliminary plat if those future lots ever got.
Right, yeah, it's definitely flexible.
This is pretty basic, because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for, uh, somebody who's wanting, like, uh, Mr. Heeb to, uh, you know, just section off one piece to go to all that trouble for something that he's not going to develop.
Exactly, right. For, in Paul's case, we'd say, your utilities as they are are fine. But here's what you will need.
Right.
When you get to that future development.
Right, yeah. Because that would just be a lot of money and time kind of down the drain, especially since somebody could come along later and propose something else, and provided it still meets those criteria, it's an administrative decision on the department's part in it, because the shadow plat is not recorded.
Exactly, okay.
It's an expensive undertaking, too.
Yes.
And it might, based on it, based on the wetlands study, or just a critical area in general, you can find that, hey, you know, you just can't really do anything because of some weirdness going on with whatever you have going on.
Right.
And that's like, starts at like 6,000 bucks. Yeah. Anyway, anybody else have anything to add? Silas?
Follow-on question from that. So if there was wetland on the property and you weren't able to get four dwellings in that shadow plating for that one acre, then would they still be allowed to go forward with the subdivision of that one parcel?
So the, the regulations for critical areas, it does have an allowance for density reduction in that case. If there is wetlands covering the whole shebang, and you say, oh dang, I can only get three units on here. It's, it's kind of a case-by-case basis thing there, too, according to director approval. So, you know, if they're trying to do minimum four, and I can only get one lot, then we might be like, uh, maybe not worth it. But if they're pretty close, then we'll look at reductions on a case-by-case basis there. Okay, thank you.
Matthew?
Hey, excuse me, a question I have, where are the amendments, they were non-binding?
Yes, they're non-binding.
I didn't really understand if the purpose of the reduced urban sprawl and the plan to develop the property, what happens if the plan did not materialize because not binding?
Yeah, so the shadow plat itself is non-binding in the way that it is not a recorded document, right? Like a subdivision would be. Kind of speaking to that, it, that is a good point. It's kind of the intention of this, though, is a lot of people are seeing these properties springing up with 13 new lots, and, you know, it's, there are a lot of pushback. There is a lot of pushback from people saying, you know, this isn't little, small-town Cedro Woolly anymore. So this is kind of a way for us to have more gradual development of properties. And as new owners come, they may find they want to develop according to the four units per acre. So eventually, it will be satisfied, um, or it will remain farmland, whatever it may be, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Could you summarize, oh, sorry. Could you summarize one more time what needs to be done to achieve this shadow plating? Because I thought it was a napkin sketch in my mind, but there sounds like there's a lot more to it.
Sort of a napkin sketch, so. So what, when the applicant says, I want to do a shadow plat, they would submit a subdivision application. They would show, it's essentially, call it a short plat, right? So say they're wanting to do two lots, which doesn't meet the four units per acre. So they'll show the subdivision, which will get recorded with just the two lots. Maybe put kind of a dotted line kind of area at the back where they're not planning on doing anything quite yet. They would submit a separate document, that would be their shadow plat, and it would be their rendering of what it could be in the future. So draw up their lots according to minimum lot size, draw up their street, private street, public street, draw up their utility easements, et cetera, et cetera. Basically, I'm going to review that like it's a preliminary plat. And be, I would, you know, send comments, you know, this doesn't quite meet, if, if it doesn't, if this doesn't quite meet preliminary plat standards, we'll send them back to the drawing board until it is. So that way, they can get their subdivision, and I can ensure that the rest of the property will be able to meet our zoning regulations. That short plat subdivision is the document that ends up getting recorded. So we hang on to that shadow plat in our files. And kind of when someone says, okay, I'm ready to, to develop, we pull that shadow plat out of the file, say, here, this is what we got. Are you going with this, or are you changing it? Then we'll go back through the shadow plating process again if they want to change it, or they'll stick with it and record that document under a subdivision. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I thought you said there was a, a meeting you had to have, uh, with the group.
The pre-application meeting. So that's before the subdivision application. And that's where they get in touch with planning staff, building staff, fire, PUD.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody gets involved, okay.
And we'll just let them know the bare basics. This is what you'll have to do to meet the code to do this development.
Pre-app meetings are beyond important. I mean, that is the first step to move any development. It doesn't really matter what the jurisdiction is. And it just allows an applicant to know if they can even do anything based upon the available utilities or whatever it is. Thank you. Anything else?
One more question, Nicole. So, um, I was kind of hearing a couple, what I thought was possibly a couple of different things. So say there were potentially critical areas, just, you know, looking, it's forested, there's a creek running across it, something like that. Would that reconnaissance be required then at the shadow plat? Or it would basically, as you said, we have a provision in the code, actually right above, I believe, this shadow plat one that talks about that reduced density that could be allowed if a lot of your property is encumbered. So we don't, wouldn't worry about that until the preliminary plat? Or would that, because that can be somewhat, uh, expensive to undertake that?
I wouldn't worry about that until the point that we go to record the shadow plat portion of things, because that will have to go through its own preliminary plat approval process.
Right, and at that point, it's no longer a shadow plat.
Right, and at that point is when we would have them do their critical areas.
Okay.
Since, yeah, so, and we can kind of do a combination, shadow plat and the density reduction if there are found to be wetlands on site and work. reduction, if there are found to be wetlands on site, and work with them on that.
I thought this was a really slick solution to a bunch of different planning problems, and uh, it's new. So we're really not gonna get anything going until you get at least one application to see what exactly, what the challenges were. Somebody's gotta be first on base, just saying.
And and to that point, would, in this case, this bypasses the issue of city and county, or is there an issue there with using land that's in the county as part of your shadow plat? Is it in the U G A?
It's not within the U G A, so I can't process it, no.
Anything else? Okay, so at this time, I would like to take a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to chapter sixteen dot oh four S W M C. Do I have a first?
Commissioner Fatisi, um, we are the, I just wanted to correct, uh, planning commission? I think you said city council, so.
I'm just reading off of this.
Well, no, we're gonna make a
Motion.
I I will make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to chapter sixteen point zero four of the Sejro Woolly Municipal Code.
Commissioner Maddox makes a first, I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Frenette. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor by show of hands? Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed. Motion passes. Okay, on to public hearing number two. C P A dash one dot two three, proposed changes to the zoning and comprehensive plan land use maps. Benson rezone request. If I just blew up your name, I apologize. R Z dash two zero two three dash zero zero four. We will open the meeting at seven oh one P M. So, do we have any emails or mail to be read into the record?
We do not.
Do we have any audience members wishing to speak?
Only if there's clarification that's needed.
Please come introduce yourself.
John Benson, uh, one seven eight eight five, Sam Bell Road in Bow. And so, um, I think we all have a history on this one, because we've been talking about it for a while. But I'm requesting a rezone on a piece of property on Ball Street to R fifteen. The particular place, uh, it just makes sense. It's it's bordering R fifteen currently with the Cascade View Apartments. It's sandwiched between the apartment complex and the Jehovah's Witness Church. Um, and I just, based on reading through the Sejro Woolly Comprehensive Plan, I mean, one of the suggestions in there is to upzone some residential property to a higher density, for example, R fifteen multifamily. I think there's a great need for it. I think the new comprehensive plan's gonna go into more detail about needing properties like this. So I've held off for a few years trying to get to this point. I've actually been paying a sewer bill for twenty years for a piece of property that doesn't have any plumbing on it. So that's it, unless there's questions on. So are we looking at two different things here, removing the, permanently removing the language that held this up, or the actual rezone of the property? Were we doing with, dealing with two different?
So tonight's public hearing is on your rezone. So that statement that we had issue with, and I'll kind of briefly go over that, it has been removed through ordinance, so. Just a public hearing on yours, so we'll make a recommendation tonight.
Yeah, so just for clarification, there was some ambiguous language that was found that said that there was a moratorium on R fifteen from nearly twenty years ago, and I'm sure that there's been several properties that have been rezoned to R fifteen over that time period. I just think that that went largely unnoticed.
Yeah, just to share this with you, we actually had the city attorney that was there at that time that actually wrote that.
Pat Hayden.
Yeah, Pat Hayden.
Yeah, I came to that meeting, and and he said it wasn't his intent.
Right, right. And at that time, when it's just one person doing a comp plan, plus that, I have to tell you, they did an amazing job. Yeah, seriously. It's a lot of work. We're going into our next cycle now, and it's quite involved.
Right.
Yeah. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Do we have any online members wishing to comment? I'll take that as a no. So I'll close public hearing number two at seven oh five P M. And has everyone had the opportunity to review agenda item G two in the meeting package, which is C P A dash one dash two three, proposed changes to the zoning and comprehensive plan land use maps, Benson rezone request, R Z dash two oh two three dash zero zero four. And at this time, Nicole, would you like to elaborate?
Sure. So this rezone request, AKA the Benson rezone, has carried over from the twenty twenty-three comp plan docket because of that issue statement we found in the R fifteen intent section. Um, yeah, essentially, it said, no new R fifteen may be designated because it's allowed in mixed commercial and central business districts, on something to that effect. So ordinance twenty fifty-eight twenty-three removed that statement of issue, so we're ready to hold a public hearing again. Um, so Mr. Benson had requested to change the zoning of the property at four oh six Ball Street from its current R seven zoning to R fifteen. Um, planning staff finds that the development would be allowed, that would be allowed under the new zoning, would be fitting with the surrounding environment. Our fifteen zone does allow for anything between single-family up to twelve-unit apartment buildings. The property to the north, as Mr. Benson stated, does have an existing thirty-unit apartment complex on site. There's a church to the south and single-family homes to the east and west. Um, the owners of the property have voiced that they intend to pursue a future multifamily residential development of the property. Um, there's no development application currently pending for the development of the subject parcel. Um, the rezone application did state that home of the brave will provide much-needed housing to our community's disabled and retired veterans. I do want to make it clear, though, that a zoning change is not contingent on the proposed development. If a zoning change is made, any development that meets the new zoning code requirements could be approved. Um, if the rezoned R fifteen were approved, the property would be able to accommodate roughly twelve housing units, as opposed to the four to five housing units that could be accommodated under the current R seven zoning. Um, and I have confirmed with Public Works that our current city facilities could handle the potential addition of eight to nine units. Um, in all, staff finds the rezoning of this point eight-five acre property to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the existing land uses in the area, and recommends that the city council, recommends planning commission, recommend that city council approve this rezone request. Thank you.
Discussion, Matthew, would you like to start up? Do you have any questions?
I just had the if, if we're probably being more impact fees for the city.
Impact fees? Um, so as far as impact fees will go, um, you know, Jana would be much better at answering this question than me. Um, so I believe multifamily does have a different impact fee schedule than general single-family does, slightly more expensive. Um, so it would be, it would be paying for itself. Thank you.
Cassandra?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Joseph?
No thanks.
Selas?
I'm in favor of this. I think that, um, you know, everybody knows that housing is an incredibly big issue, that uh, we are short on supply, there's, there's uh, essentially zero vacancies in all of the Skagit Valley. And so, uh, based on the location, I, I think that this, I'm all for this zoning change.
Thank you. Cole?
I'm in favor, so.
Patrick?
I I don't like multifamily in general, but I understand the need for it, so I don't have any, I don't have any changes or anything, any comments.
Now, in this case, it was just where everything was at. I mean, it was just literally surrounded by other R fifteen projects, including a church and everything, so I didn't have a problem from, from the beginning. And I think what was good was, this exercise actually clarified things that would have come up anyway. So this was a good time and a good exercise to actually get the right answer. It wasn't like we just threw something and said, hey, we're gonna drop this. Let's get clarification on it. And I think that was one of my first comments, to even consult with the city attorney. But we were fortunate to actually get the city attorney that was there at the time that wrote it. So that was a really unique experience, and just sharing that, that history of what was going on at that time. You know, for people like us, that's a really important kind of, uh, just an appearance like that, that really gives a quite a bit of guidance as to what they were thinking at the time and why things happened the way they happened. But, okay, thank you. So at this point, would anyone like to make a motion that the city council approves amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning maps as the proposed, as proposed in R Z dash two zero two three dash zero zero four, to change the zoning designation of Assessor's Parcel P seven seven one eight five, from the residential R, the current residential R seven zoning designations to residential fifteen?
I saw move.
I have a first from Commissioner Freiburger. Do I have a second?
I say it.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? If not, all in favor, show of hands?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. On to unfinished business, none on agenda. New business, that's gonna be interesting. Proposed amendments to chapter two dot nine, seventeen dot oh eight, seventeen dot one two, and seventeen dot one six S W M C, and the addition of chapter seventeen dot one two oh S W M C to add regulations for tiny home communities. That was all the mouthful. Take it away.
Yeah, so, um, a little background on this. I was first approached specifically about tiny home community regulations by the organization Family Promise. So, um, if you're not familiar with them, they do self-help housing programs. Um, people who are, find themselves kind of down and out and have trouble getting themselves housing can come to these people. Um, they enter into these programs at first. It'll be, okay, so you're gonna stay here at this church, and we have you, you're gonna start doing this work, and if you can do this for this amount of time and show us that you are doing well, you move on to the second step of the program. And they'll be leased out a home, um, and kind of similar situation. If they're doing well in that program, then they get to step three, and they get to, um, build and occupy as, as an owner of, of the house, um, brand-new homes. So they, they kind of brought this to my attention. They were like, this would be something great for the Sejro Woolly community, um, to have the self-help program kind of focused on tiny homes. Um, people find those a little bit, uh, more budget-friendly, so. I was thinking about this, you know, I would love to see tiny home communities, um, in Sejro Woolly, but not just for Family Promise. I wanted them to be just anyone could come and say, I want to do this, you know, according to regulations and whatnot. So I, this is my shot at putting something together for that. They are modeled off of the planned residential development regulations, just tweaked to the smaller scale, and kind of, um, thinking through some additional bonuses for density that you may be able to get. Um, a lot of this was put together by my intern, Isaac Miller. They got me an intern. So, um, yeah, so a lot of it was, was his ideas. Most of the, the bonuses that are in there came from him, so you can thank him for those. Um, but other than that, I'm happy to work through this. I'd like to have an open discussion on this. There are a lot of things that still need to kind of be talked through, like impact fees, how will those apply, um, design standards, those sorts of things. I haven't gotten to think through too much, but I wanted to get something in front of you guys, kind of as a base plate, so.
Take it away down in the corner.
All right. Um, so Nicole, so the, I didn't have time to read every word of it, but it sounds like the, what you're proposing are, are that they'll all be on wheels, that they're, um, they're built on a chassis, and not, uh, not, uh, permanent structures.
So that was something that Bobby, building inspector, and I were trying to hash out. So there is a difference between a tiny home and a park model. So a park model is that, where it's built with the chassis and the wheels. You can move it at any time. A tiny home is expected to be constructed on a foundation, a permanent structure.
Okay, good. That's what I was, was wondering. Thank you.
Cole?
So, um, kind of going off of Commissioner Huggins' thought, I can see where, where he was going with it, and I was also thinking that. I saw that twenty-five percent, I think, in their, uh, park model, and I am, I think we need to look at that a bit more, because this is not intended to be a mobile home park. And I think that is, there, there's other ways, well, we could just make it a hundred percent, um, tiny homes. I'm, I'm not against the idea of tiny homes. I think that in our modern society, where we have a lot of our value is in digital electronics, you can live in a very small space and quite comfortably. Um, and they've designed some pretty amazing things. Um, well, plenty of people live in RVs now that are very small and, and choose to retire that way. Um, so, um, but I do think that we need to, uh, closely look at, we don't want just another variation on a mobile home park.
Yeah, that, that was the reason I put a cap on that. Um, something I was thinking of, though, too, was the ease of removal. Um, if you do find issues with the home and you say, okay, this is getting expensive, I need to replace this, that, and the other thing, why don't we just get rid of that, bring in a new one? That was kind of a thought Family Promise had brought up to me. So they're interested in the park models. I wanted to see what you guys thought about that ratio, but, um, yeah, I, I like the idea of permanent structures better. It feels more of a, just a housing community as opposed to mobile home parks, so.
Well, and, and I feel like park model, to me, just the name of that even, is something that's more supposed to be limited in scope. You know, you, you put it in a park, maybe for the caretaker to live in, or maybe I'm, I'm going off in the wrong direction here. But I feel like it's not something you would see as part of a subdivision, essentially, with having a bunch of them. Um, but, so you're saying Family Promise actually were, who mentioned the ease of removable-ability?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and that argument versus a mobile home park, I mean, what is the benefit there?
Right, and that was kind of the thought, that this kind of feels like it's more partial to, to Family Promise's specific development, I would say. Um, their concern mainly was, um, you know, it, it, the step-by-step program, you know, you're kind, essentially testing people, are they fit to live in this home? And in the chance that they're not, you know, things may not go the way they hope with that. There may be damage to the property. So in that case, it would be an easy way to kind of say, okay, we need to get it out of here quickly, so. Um, but, yeah, I'm happy to, if we want to take that out, I'm happy to do that.
That's just my thought. We haven't heard from everybody else, so.
Go ahead. You're up next.
Well, um, I haven't had a chance to get, I, I sort of gave this an overview, but I, I don't, I haven't gotten down into the weeds of the proposal here, but, um, But, um, couple broad sort of thoughts. First, I think that, um, enabling, uh, the easy creation of a variety of housing types is essential to continuing to meet the housing needs and the varied housing needs of the people that live here and the people who may wanna come and live here. We're in the middle of a housing crisis and housing has become cost prohibitive for many people. And so, um, creating regulations that allow a variety of different housing types to meet a variety of different needs, I think, is in the city's best interest. I'm not sure how a tiny home community of tiny homes built on wheels, which I believe we're referring to as park models, is different from a mobile home park, which I believe, uh, could be developed within the existing building regulations. I think that if we're talking about a scaled-down PRD or a sort of smaller, I, I assume that means smaller lot sizes and smaller buildings. In my mind, those buildings have to be built to existing building codes and, um, we shouldn't be worried about the need to remove them. These are not disposable structures. Now, if we're talking about, uh, like homeless transitional housing and like these little tiny home villages, I know there's several up in Bellingham, that's a different thing. And I don't think that's what this is talking about. But I'm not opposed to that necessarily, but that, that's a very different sort of discussion, I think. And so I'm excited to see how this all plays out. And I do think that, um, I know there's a neighborhood that's up by the Northern State or the Swift Center. It's like the Sunflower, what, do, what's that place called?
Well, everybody calls it the Creola cottages, but.
Wildflower or something?
Wildflower, yeah.
I call it Skittleville.
Skittleville, okay. We'll call it Skittleville. That is kind of what I imagine this like, you know? And I don't know if that, how that was developed. That was before the, the planning commission did all the work on our current PRD. And those are fairly small places on very small lots. And I think that that is, um, by all, like, you know, just walking by it and seeing it, as I've lived in Seadrwully for, you know, eleven years now, it seems like a successful community. And I think things like that provide housing options for people that might not be able to afford a more traditional, you know, three thousand square foot single-family home with three-car garage and all of that. So, um, anyway, so those are my initial comments. And I look forward to sort of digging into this and seeing, um, what the actual proposals are and, and how we can move forward with this.
Thank you. Before I move on, so I'm working with a company called Carriage Homes out of Marysville that does exactly this. So if you wanna see examples of a tiny home, Highway twenty at the first roundabout at the industrial area, look in the back there. You'll see like this little two-story structure. That's a tiny home. And just because they have wheels, which is why you want them, is because that's DOL. It's not technically a house. So if you can't put a detached ADU, bring in a tiny home. And they will build them custom. You wouldn't even know that they were like some kind of RV or anything. It's just a way to potentially handle different types of housing that is not permitted in a community or a city simply because it's now classified as something else under different regulations. So when I saw tiny homes, I was like, hey, hang on a second. This is not what you think it is. So as we go on through this, I'll bring you examples of exactly what I'm talking about. And if we're talking about like a rehab-style setup where we have people on top of people, what's the setbacks gonna be? What are the utilities gonna be? How do you handle sanitation, which is a big one? Power, water? It's got all the, the pieces that you need to, you know, put something together that, that's gonna work. So I get where we're going here, but let's approach this with a little bit of caution and look at examples as well.
I think the, the definitions for park model and tiny home could use some touch-ups. Isaac took a pretty good stab at it, but I think, yeah. And especially if we're taking park models out, I don't know if we're going with that, but.
So what, what is our goal here? To create affordable housing? Is that what you said?
Yeah. With affordable housing as well as infill development in light of the comprehensive plan and the state's mandates for densification. I think it's something that we, a creative way, kind of appealing, cute little way that we can get away with that, with what we have in town.
Can anyone describe affordable?
I can't.
You can?
No.
Objective.
There's, there's actually a calculation to it. So depending, depending on the community or county, what's the average salary? And then you take sixty percent of that average salary. And that's considered, you know, a person that could qualify for, you know, assisted housing and things like that. So what is affordable housing? It, it all depends. You look at apartments, it, it's.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause if, if you want the most bang for your buck, in my opinion, apartment buildings are affordable. And when you start, I don't have, do we have any PRDs anywhere in the city?
We have plenty of PRDs in the city.
Oh, we do?
Oh, yeah.
And so these are these little communities where there's houses clumped in a certain area and there's green space and a lake with swans and all that stuff? Like we were, is that what we were designing years ago?
That's what we were working on and.
Yeah. And do we, we, I know we have apartments, but do we have these little communities with green spaces and?
If you've gotten a chance to look at Baco Estates out on FNS Grade Road?
Oh, yeah.
That's an example of a PRD.
Okay.
But those houses are six hundred and fifty grand.
Those are, and seven, seven hundred and fifty. And to me, that's not affordable and that's a PRD.
Right.
Okay, so, and you look at Wildwood Way, those are tiny homes, but they're not even this tiny. Those are like eight hundred square feet, two-bedroom, one-bath, a starter home. Those are three hundred and fif, no, those are up to four hundred to five hundred thousand. And how do you afford a piece of property? You know, a tiny home's a hundred thousand. A piece of property anywhere is a hundred and fifty thousand. Now you're two hundred and fifty thousand. And who, who's gonna, do you have, is this like, uh, does someone own the property and collect HOAs and manage the property and, or is it a free-for-all? Everybody owns a little tiny lot? There's so many questions. I mean, in all due respect, I, I had some good chuckles reading through the, the specs. I mean, four hundred square foot house and, and the setbacks, ten feet in the front, ten feet in the back, and five feet on each side. Your, your house is gonna be like six feet by six feet with those setbacks, with the lot sizes. Seventy-five houses in a two-acre area, I don't know how that can be allowed. But you can get a lot more than that in an apartment building 'cause you can go up five stories or four anyway. So anyway, just, it's right now, it makes absolutely no sense to me, but I'm sure that with enough discussion, it might. And, and it's never been a pleasant topic whenever tiny homes have come up in the past. It's, it's like, we, we don't want that here, but times are changing, I understand. So maybe we do now. But boy, awful lot of thoughts gotta go into it. I've only heard bad things about, like, we, over the number of years, at least a dozen times, I've heard bad things about, what'd you call the cracker boxes up there? Skittleville or?
I think it's actually called Wildflower Estates.
Okay. That, and even to me, Clingerville, I thought was, you know, Clinger Estates, I thought was a great affordable housing community, but nothing but bad press about that. And I don't know why. I thought it was great. I like the Wildwood. That's, that's cool. And I don't know if we have to reinvent the wheel. All we have to do is build, a developer has to build houses that aren't seven hundred thousand. They should build, you know, build six hundred square foot houses. Don't build six thousand square foot houses. If there's a demand for it, why aren't they building them right now? 'Cause they can.
Banks control the formula, not the, not the designers of the homes.
This is a totally different animal. I got examples for you.
Yeah.
In the next couple of meetings, I'll, I'll bring you information what Carriage Homes does. So you'll actually could see it, how they price it, they'll custom build it. But as long as they got wheels, it's a totally, totally different animal.
And I think we can work with the square footage. We can finagle that how we want to. I mean, we allow ADUs up to a hundred square feet as it stands, and that counts as a tiny house in my opinion. So I think the four hundred square feet was the direct definition pulled off of the ANSI regulations. That's what tiny homes are regulated by, the code. But we can do with that what we will, so.
Okay, so at this point, we're talking about this 'cause I'm not fully invested in this because I've seen some of these other projects. And we need to really take a deep look at this. And now if we're looking at it for a very specific situation of people with significant, you know, issues, I think that's a separate issue outside of the housing issue. Cassandra?
Yeah, a lot of the things that I had written down have, have already been brought up. So I guess that's the benefit of, of being second to last or third to last.
I go from, I'll start one way, I'll mix it up.
No, no, I like it. I like it. As a firmer first meeting, this is perfect. So I, I concur with a lot of the, the concerns. Some of the things that I did like was the, the creation of an HOA in the, in the teeny community to make sure that we're kind of maintaining a standard. I liked the parks and the common walkways. I also liked some of the easements and setbacks. Some of the concerns for me were, you know, echoing some of my other commissioners here, the, the stick built, you know, versus, you know, having a home that is a park model because a park model to me is a really loose term. I mean, I Googled it and I got everything from really nice fifth wheels, you know, to really like beautiful homes that, you know, once they're all cased in, you would never know that they were on wheels. But I think a stick-framed home, I, I would like to see a progression to that. The, the biggest concern for me was the density and being able to put, you know, potentially thirty units on a half an acre, you know, if you got your energy and climate-efficient bonuses plus your ride-sharing and bus stops for a residential code or residential five, which is like our single-family, you know, in, in city limits. And then, and then going on to thirty-five potential units in zone seven and then forty in, in that zone fifteen, all on a half an acre. To me, that feels more like a multi-tenant for the amount of draw that's gonna put on. You like utilities and infrastructure and, and water and sewer, you know, and those, and those kind of things, thinking of the amount of people, you know, that would be inhabiting those homes, averaging like one and a half to two people. That, that to me feels like a multi-tenant property and, and not, you know, a zone five or a zone seven. So that was my kind of biggest concern that I wanted to bring up tonight.
Yeah, Matthew, before I move on to you. So what we've done in the past, Cassandra, is we'll look at projects like this in the area and go look at them. So we do field trips. So field trips are really, really, uh, such a benefit because when we get into stuff like this, you wanna see somebody else that did it. And it's either gonna be a successful deployment or you're gonna be like, hmm.
Yeah.
I don't wanna bring problems in because somebody didn't think through something. Because when you start talking densities like this, and like, instead of a consultant for a tiny home company builder?
Yeah.
Okay, I get what they do. And a lot of times, the reason we're doing a tiny home is to get around the code because we can't do a dad do.
Right.
Okay? Where I need setbacks, okay? I need environmental, I need all this stuff. This is like a glorified RV and all I really need is sanitation, water, and power.
Yeah.
This is, could be a slippery, a slippery slope unless you've actually done this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So before we, you know, put anything anywhere, we'll start identifying different projects and maybe we'll get that on the agenda. Spring's coming up and it's not everybody that needs to go, but typically a bunch of us will head on up if we got, you know, availability in our schedules.
Yeah. I love that idea. I, I did Google a few teeny home communities to try to, to try to get an idea of it. And, um, yeah, it's a great idea.
And, and there's different kinds. I mean, this is, you have a tiny home community versus a tiny home community for a very specific purpose that might be different outside of just general housing. So, anyway, Matthew?
As I was reading the proposed amendment to the Cooper tiny house, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around some of the things. I think that they answered pretty much the last suggestion. But I read in, uh, table seventeen dot one two oh dot oh four oh, the maximum of twenty-five units per acre. And I, I think it's, and when I read that, I thought, well, fifteen more than twenty-five more than fifteen. So how do they do this? They do this because it's more house?
Essentially, yes. So I think what Isaac did is he put an Excel spreadsheet together and he calculated in some basic percentages excluding open space, excluding any areas for infrastructure. So talking about your streets and your parking and utility easement areas, things like that, and kind of did some calculations to figure out how much could you get in here at max housing for the size properties? So we can always lessen this if we're feeling that it is too dense. It was just a basic calculation on Excel. So it, you know, seeing that in real life, it's gonna be different, so.
It turns me into a high number.
Seems high, yeah.
A good check, it's twenty-five units per acre. It seemed like a very tense population to me.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment. I've been following these for like twenty years now. And, and they are, they're very interesting to me as an architecture student because they're just, they're very, they're very thought-provoking for, for architects. They love, they love working on them, you know, and designers. And so you come up with really creative stuff. If you wanna see some, if you wanna go home tonight and watch, you can watch Tiny House Nation on, on, I don't know if you have it on cable, but on digital, you can see it. And also you can YouTube them and see how a lot of people use them. I've only seen two eco ones where it's tiny home villages. And they look very eclectic because they basically are set up like trailer parks. The concept is not fully developed yet, so we're getting in on, on the, in a way, on the cutting edge of, of the villages for tiny homes. But what normally they are doing is the people, there are people who can't afford and they're buying the tiny houses and pulling them in on family's property in the backyard, like an ADU where somebody has a farm and they pull them in on the, in the lot there and they're out in the field. And, uh, and so this gets them a way to get by. There are also people who are dating communities, right? They're, they're out there dating communities. They come to Seadrwully and they want a place to park it for a while, so they'll find a friend or one of these villages and they'll try it out. And if they like it, then maybe they decide to buy a permanent home in the area. Or maybe they're just nomads and that's how they wanna live. And they're gonna live a year here and two years there and, and whatever. So anyway, there's a lot of different ways that they're being used. But I agree with all of you guys that we have to proceed very, very carefully because, you know, I see, personally, I, I think that has to be a minimum of PRD process because the tiny homes themselves, we're still gonna have to deal with parking. Some of the people are, are, are gonna be on bicycles and stuff, but others are not. And you're gonna have, we have to deal with all those things. We're also gonna have to deal with the fact that comes up very often in the shows that I watch is that the houses are great for them to live in. It's, it's just a couple and they're living in it. Or it's a single mom with a, with a child or some, a small child. And that works great except that they can't really entertain. It's very hard to entertain. So they're gonna be entertaining outside of their home. It's gonna be expandable, onings and things so that they can, they can entertain outside their home. But they may also need like a clubhouse built into these things. So you're kind of looking at a minimum like a P- So you're kind of looking at a minimum, like a PRD or a, a well-designed trailer court situation, where you have, um, amenities that are, um, uh, that they're gonna need that you just can't have in a house that tiny easily, so. Anyway, I, I'm, I'm for them, but, uh, I'd have to, I'd want it very, very carefully thought out, and it sounds like everybody feels the same, so I encourage that. And another thing that I see coming down the road, um, I, some of you will remember that I predicted about two years ago, that eventually we would be living in, uh, the city of Cedar Woolley would be approving cardboard boxes, ten-by-ten cardboard boxes to live in because of the housing shortage, and we're not there yet, we still got another ten years by my, uh, approximation, but one of the things that is gonna be coming up is, um, pods. Somebody's gonna eventually want to come into town, and they're gonna want to take it one of these old buildings downtown, and they're gonna want to put in sleeping pods. And the sleeping pods, not the little tiny ones like they have in Japanese airports and stuff like that, but I'm talking about ones that you kind of stoop, stoop into, and it has a TV set and a writing counter and whatnot on one side, and a bed on the other, and a place to store some stuff up above for people who are just moving through and need a place out of the, the weather, and, uh, and, and that's also a movement now that's, uh, just, uh, about to take off, I think, with the, the situation we're in. So that's another one that we'll be seeing, and upsets.
Onto the architectural, uh, idea. So that example that I, I pointed out on Highway twenty, it's right at the roundabout, it's right in the middle before you would head down to the barbecue place. It's deep in the back, and it's for sale, it's like a two-story kind of thing, but it's smaller. It's really cool looking, I'm just like, oh, that's all right.
Oh, the one that's in the Skagit Steel, the old Skagit Steel yard?
It's in the back there.
Do you know the, do you know the history of that?
Yeah.
So they just had, that was like a, a weekend group building thing? So they were building, I think it was Holloman Woodworking, I'm not sure, anyway, it was a woodworking company, and they had all these cut-off pieces and leftover junk and everything? And so for a weekend, they said, hey, we're gonna take this weekend, we're all gonna come together as a group, and we're gonna build a tiny home as a, um, as a weekend project to, to group build. And they did, and that's just all the leftover materials that were sitting around in their, in their building that was taking up space. And they had a chassis sitting there, so.
We get up down a bunch of garages here in Cedar Woolley, do the same thing.
Yeah, and I've heard that several people tried to buy it, but they, they haven't sold it.
I thought it was for sale for some reason.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I don't know. Anyway, anybody, this needs to be taken a look at, and, uh, you know, I've just, uh, like I said, I'm doing consulting work right now, and you can do some really nice product, and basically is, if you put them on wheels, they're a totally different animal from a whole lot of reasons. It's DOL, it's a VIN number, it's kind of like a custom-built RV, and you skirt it out, you wouldn't even know the difference, so, anyway.
But those things aren't cheap.
They're not, no, no, you can, you can spend upwards of, uh, like their high-end one, ninety grand.
That, that, that sounds cheap. The folks that are building them over in the Skagit, where that one is you're talking about, uh, they start at, you know, maybe a hundred and twenty-five, and you can easily spend two hundred and fifty grand.
Yeah, I'll bring some stuff with me for the next meeting and, and.
More of those things, and so, um, but yeah, I, I mean, I think that Commissioner Farnett's point, that if you're really trying to build affordable housing, uh, you gotta go up. Like isolated little buildings are not the answer. Apartment buildings are, both from an ecological perspective and from just a practical cost perspective, and, um, you know, we live in America where everybody thinks they need their own individual building, but, um, the reality is, is that, uh, multifamily is the most affordable housing solution, and, um, a, a, a four-hundred-square-foot apartment is gonna be, uh, much more energy-efficient and cost-effective than a bunch of four-hundred-square-foot individual buildings on wheels that may or may not ever go anywhere, so.
In this case, though, I think what started this was, and I've, we've seen it in Seattle and in other places, is to get people that are homeless, that have issues, into some type of transitional housing. So that's a different animal, totally, than the remainder of the discussion, so.
I think the variety in housing too kind of adds to the conversation, and Comp Plan really pushes for that, so.
We get it.
Infill developments, big ask that the state is requesting of us, so, and this was kind of my stab at a creative way to figure out how to do that.
We're gonna get deeper into the weeds as the months go on. Congratulations. So if we don't have anything, anything else to add to this? So Planning Commission discussion information items. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was a really good first meeting for you guys, and you get to see how everything kind of like works around here, and, uh, I think you're both gonna really enjoy it and get a very fulfilling experience here, but you're getting to see, just on what we were talking about tonight, how really important this stuff is. So it's, it's, it's imperative that you take it like as something that, it, it's a responsibility, which I both know that you already get that, because you've been interviewed. You passed. But is there anything else you'd like to add, Cassandra?
No, just I'm grateful to be here, looking forward to the future.
How about you, Matthew?
May I ask you a question? About the tiny houses, the one net, uh, how does this, we will all discuss it? Is there a second read, or we haven't voted on anything yet?
No, 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 this is just how we start the process, is I think. Before anything happens here, it could be over two years by the time anything happens. Like the PRD ordinance?
We'll be done next week.
It was two years, it was two years. You, you get really deep in this stuff, we'll have people come on in.
Yeah, it, it was a year past, withdrawn, uh, sat for ten years, came back, and we spent, what, almost two years, right?
Two years, it was two years.
Finally, yeah.
Well, thank you for welcoming me, I'm very happy to be here.
We're happy to have you here, also. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, make your first motion.
I'm adjourned.
Good. Have a second.
I will make my second.
Okay, there you go. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed. Meeting closed at seven forty-seven PM. Thank you, everyone.